Good afternoon.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the Avon Town Council Meeting of October 23rd to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Julie. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope. Bill Holland.
Present.
Greg Zuzen. Don Loudon.
Present.
Jason Puckett.
Present.
Let me get another one. Okay, next on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including the October 23rd check register, the October 9th work session memo, and the approval of minutes from the October 9th meeting as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Julie. Roll call, please.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Before we get to the public comment, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to add an agenda item for the town council to discuss the purchase of and to vote on the purchase of new police vehicles.
Second.
Julie, roll call.
Okay, so, Bill Holland.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
All right, next is public comment. Public may come forward and comment on the agenda that is not part of a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. If you come forward, please make sure the microphone is on and state your name and No one coming forward, but go ahead and close that portion of the public comment and move on to council comment and liaison reports.
I have nothing.
Nothing for me tonight.
And nothing for me. It's going to be a quick meeting. Moving on to new business, this is the agreement to complete the preliminary design for the White Lake Creek Pedestrian Bridge and the annual agreement for the life cycle marketing. Ryan, are you speaking?
Yes, I'm going to do all of these. The agreement to complete the preliminary design for White Lake Creek Pedestrian Bridge, as you guys recall, actually at your, our last work session, we discussed applying for some federal funds for this project. I had kind of given the council a heads up that this was coming and that we'd like to move forward with the beginning of the design. The agreement is from CHA. CHA has helped us with our White Lake Creek Trail Design. They actually also designed the pedestrian bridge over, the existing pedestrian bridge over White Lake Creek down by our sports facilities that connects to the Washington Township Park. We are planning on using the same design and so utilizing the same consultant we did on that makes a lot of sense. We've been really happy with CHA. There's also some stream bank protection and so for those of you who were a part of this, when we did the previous section, we ran into, later on, we ran into some stream bank protection. This time, we've added in the stream bank protection into the design at the very beginning of the project to make sure we're addressing that as part of the project so we don't get surprised by anything later. But CHA did that for us as well and again, it has turned out great. We've not had any erosion in those areas that we repaired, so we've been really happy with CHA's work. As I acknowledge to all of you guys, this is very expensive, so when you see it, we'll probably end up spending about a million dollars on the design of the bridge and the bridge will end up costing us a million and a half dollars. But on bridges like this, when we're in environmentally sensitive areas, we have to get Army Corps permits, we have to get IDEM permits, we have to do hydraulic analysis. It's, the permitting will take us alone, will take us three to five years just to get the permits that we need. So this step is what I kind of refer to as phase one. If we don't get started, we never get down that path. But doing it kind of in phases like this also helps us make sure we don't get to a point and get surprised by something we didn't expect. And so I do think this works better. As I mentioned in my memo to all of you, we did budget actually $175,000 this year for it and then in the budget that the council recently approved, we have about another $175,000 in the budget. So we don't have quite enough to cover the whole cost, but again, this first phase will probably take us three years, so we're going to spread that cost out over the next three years. We are proposing to use food and beverage revenue to pay for the design. With that, I think I mentioned earlier, there is funding in here as well to prepare the grant application to the MPO for CHA to help us prepare that grant application, which is due in about a month, so we'll need to get going on that as quickly as possible, which is why this is on your agenda tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we would recommend approval.
I have a question. You just said that we have like 175 in the budget for this year for this and then 175 for next year. And if it's a three-year project and it's a million dollars, I'm, I wasn't ever really good at math, but I'm better than that.
Good question. So I'm just talking about the 374,000, so what we're asking you to approve tonight is the 374. So really, it may take us five years, so that million dollars may get, end up getting spread out over a five-year period. So again, we try to, even though you're approving the contract, it takes them time and so you're not getting billed all of that upfront, you're getting billed incrementally as they complete the work. And so over time, as long as the council continues to budget for it, you'll get those additional future pieces presented to you guys later and we would do those as addendums to this existing contract.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So one and a half million over the course of five years, does that take into consideration the increase, increases in cost as we go along in that five-year span?
It does. When we do our application, we're actually required, so the year that we apply, so if we apply for federal funds in like 2031, we will incrementally adjust and the MPO actually gives us a percentage, they'll say use three and a half percent per year from now until whenever you're applying for the funds and so that is built into our application when we do it.
That number you quoted, is that what we used for this application or is that just an example?
That was just like an example, that was kind of, actually it was just a wag, we don't actually have an estimate on the actual bridge, but the one, the previous one we built was a million and a half, so I used that as an example. But you're right, that, that one we built four years ago, so it'll be more expensive than a million and a half.
Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement to complete the preliminary design for White Lake Creek, White Lick Creek Pedestrian Bridge as presented.
Julie, roll call, please.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Thank you. Next is the annual agreement for the life cycle modeling.
Yeah, again, this one we talked about, staff did a presentation for the council at our last work session on the Rivers Ravenel and our life cycle modeling. That software is an annual contract, so you will notice in this, this, this is effective. What we previously paid them covers us up through the end of next year, so this is in anticipation of covering us from January 1st of next year till December 31st of 2026. We did budget for this as well. Again, staff has found this to be a powerful tool and we would request the town council to approve. This does include them updating the data with new data as we do it, so all of that helps us keep, keep the information fresh and up to date. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual agreement for life cycle modeling for Withers Ravenel as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Julie. Roll call, please.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Okay, we'll go ahead and put in the police vehicle purchase at this time, so.
All right. Good evening, I'm Steve Barton, Lieutenant and Train Coordinator over at the Avon Police Department. So I wrote up this proposal. To go over here briefly, we were approved to purchase six vehicles, at least as far as our budget goes for next year. Yesterday, we had a meeting with Ryan and Julie with Chief Stoops and Deputy Chief Margussen. During that meeting, we found that we had some extra funds in the CCD. Because of this, this money is budgeted towards vehicles and so I contacted Kelly Chevrolet. So Kelly, Kelly Chevrolet is the dealership that handles any sort of department purchases of vehicles. Long story short, when I made contact with them, they advised that they had seven vehicles on their lot that are spec, how we spec our patrol vehicles. And so that had me get to a point where I reached out to Julie and we were talking about budgetarily if this would be something that we can move forward with now. So these are purchases that we are planning on making in '26. She said that the first payment would go out around March and so because of this, this is something that we could potentially go forward with now, again, being a purchase that we'd be making next year anyway. So there's a lot of positives for moving forward now versus waiting until next year. Couple of them have to do with money, so the first thing that I found out was that if we do wait till next year and make a purchase, they're going to go up by about 7% is what the salesperson had quoted me. That 7% equals to about $3,600 per vehicle and in total, if we buy six, we're almost at $22,000 that we're going to save just there. The second thing that we'll be able to save money on is we'll replace several old vehicles. A couple of them are in the 2015, 2016 range. They're all well over 100,000 miles and they're being held together with bubble gum and hope, right? So that'll allow us to retire a lot of vehicles that are just, again, causing a lot of maintenance issues and money, so we'll save some money there. And then ultimately, you know, vehicles that we had ordered earlier this year, they're still being outfitted right now. This will get us where we will have these vehicles, you know, if you approve this purchase next month. And so then we can start working on getting them outfitted, which means that they'll go out early next year. So again, we get to retire some of these older vehicles that are, again, just kind of being held together with a lot of extra money. So that being said, again, I think there's a lot of positives to move forward with this purchase versus waiting till next year, a lot of monetary reasons as well. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions or discussion?
Are any of the vehicles we're going to retire, are they, what are we going to do with those?
Yeah, good question. So be two different things. Number one, our pool fleet, same thing, is aging and so again, is requiring a lot of maintenance, so we'll replace several of those vehicles, which we'll then be able to turn around and sell. So go into the pool and then we'll be holding a hiring process here on November 1st and so some of those vehicles are still in decent shape and those will be going to new officers.
To help answer, I think, part of that question as well, I'm going to help you out here, Steve, for a second. So when they sell, like tonight, I believe, is also on the surplus property vehicle. When they turn around and they sell vehicles, we receive the funds, I put it in, obviously their revenue line, it's not appropriated funds, so we're going to come to you towards the end of the year, well, I guess we only have three meetings left, and we'll do what we call an additional appropriation. Any of these additional appropriations are just revenue that we've received that we weren't expecting, like the sale of all these vehicles to turn around, put it back in the fund so they can spend the money or encumber it into next year. So that's what we're going to do with additional appropriations when we give it to you. They actually have almost $90,000 in additional appropriations that they weren't expecting that we're going to be presenting to you to approve and once that's approved, they'll use that money, part of that money anyways, to help outfit these new vehicles if you approve this tonight. They would like to finance these and one of the things he was talking about was the CCD money. Ryan and I keep a spreadsheet with all their payments, we're having a couple of their loans fall off next year, which will help with their payments coming out of CCD. And so they have, and then they'll still have money left over for anything in the future in their CCD fund, so they're not expending anything because we have stuff falling off. If you approve this, we'll be adding, I do shop around for the best rate, but they do want to finance all six of these and then they'll use their money from the additional appropriations to outfit them so, and just pay cash and be ready to rock and roll for all their new hires next year. But it was really nice because as you guys know, they've come before and we've had to wait eight months, they order them and he just got lucky, he made a phone call at the right time and they were there, so.
And we don't have to put any money down this year for these?
No, they're already, they're sitting on their lot and Steve can sweet talk them into holding them until we can get the financing rolling through and then once we get that, they'll all go up and get them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, just, I guess, for the general public, and even though we would be picking them up now, we, there wouldn't be a payment until next year?
Yeah, I, I'd like to stagger them like that. So when we do bids or when I do the bids at the banks, I actually only do six payments, three years, make two pain, two big payments a year, six times, and then we do a loan for three years, because normally they're kind of wearing out at the end of the three years anyways with the way they, as often as they use them. But if I'm doing it now, they always make the payment like six months out. So it'll take me about a week, week and a half, if you approve it tonight, to get all the bids and the financing rolling. Our attorneys have to write a letter, the insurance, we'd kind of do all that and then once Ryan's available, he's the one that actually signs the loan documents, the guy gives us a check on the spot and then they go. Pretty easy process.
One more question.
Sure.
So what, what's the benefit of financing?
They're not spending down their cash right now. They don't have enough left in CCD to purchase but two of them, so they could buy two vehicles cash right now, but then they'd be out of money for the rest of the year and they're still trying to outfit and pay for the ones that they currently, that they got back in September, they're doing that now. So we're trying to save the CCD money for thing, other things that they need for vehicle and equipment and then financing, since we have two loans falling off, we're just going to have one big loan for these vehicles and then pay it out of next year's money, because we're basically buying the cars this year, next year's money, since the payment won't be due until April of next year.
What do you anticipate the interest rate to be? I know you're waiting, but what, what is your?
I am, so the rates have dropped, our last, I think our September one was like four, I want to say four, seven, five, four, two, five? Four, two, two, five. So I'm hoping people come back in the high threes, which will help, because I think we financed five the last time, we want to finance six and that'll keep that payment around the same if we can get the lower rate. So yeah, I'm, I beg for great rates.
Any more? I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the police vehicles from Kelly Chevrolet as presented.
Second.
Do I need to have the amount in there?
No, you don't need the amount, but would you also authorize the financing, please? You guys need to allow Julie to do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the police vehicles and the financing of the police vehicles through Kelly Chevrolet as presented.
Second amendment.
Okay. Julie, roll call, please.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to resolution, we're going to hold a public hearing on Resolution 2025-27, it's the tax abatement on the Lake Shore books. Ryan, are you speaking to that?
I can't speak to it. Do you want to do the public hearing first or do you want me to speak to it first?
Yeah, I'll do a quick introduction. So, and sorry, I should probably correct the, the label, it's, on their application, they had some places, they said Lakeside Books, they're actual LLC and you'll notice in the resolution that I presented to you guys, it's actually LSC Communications Book LLC, so that's probably the terminology we should use instead of the Lake Shore Books, just as a heads up for anybody watching or anyone concerned. This is a project on County Road 100 South, as you guys are aware, Chicago Industrial owns a million square foot building, it's the first building just east of the Burnett Woods. The other building is occupied by Radial and Ryder, so this is the other one and it's not been filled yet, so LSC Communications Book is actually proposing to take 700,000 square feet of that building. We're excited to have them coming to town, they are a book distribution company, they currently have three facilities in different locations where they have some of their distribution, their logistics, manufacturing and then like their corporate headquarters as well, they're going to pull those all together into the singular location in Avon. And so again, they're good jobs, they're higher paying jobs than you would typically see in just a logistics scenario. So this particular tax abatement that they're requesting is a personal property tax abatement. The council had already previously approved a real property tax abatement on the building itself for Chicago Industrial, so this is just the personal property. So this is the equipment and all the things that they are putting inside the building. And again, just to refresh your guys' memory, when they do this, this has to be new purchase equipment, they can't, they can't get an abatement on equipment that they're just moving within the state, we, the state actually doesn't allow that and we wouldn't allow it either, so that's the abatement. It is a 10-year abatement, they'll bring about 200 jobs. Initially, it'll be 50, but they have said they'll bring about another 150 within the next two years, so we're, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think that's an introduction.
And you, those jobs will be above the average of the county?
They are above the county average, that's one of the things we always request and actually they, we do have a tax abatement committee that does review these, that consists of myself, John Taylor and Superintendent Wyndham, and so it would be our recommendation from the committee as well that the town council approved the abatement.
I have two questions. I know we talked about it being LSC Communications, but I do see Lake Shore and Lakeside, do we know which one it is, just for?
Well, I, I don't, so we're going off the information that they provided and it was confusing and that's what, I, I had this conversation with Dan, the SB1 form, which is the legal form, has LSC Communications Book.
Okay.
So I think that's what we should actually use because that's what they're doing there and so, yeah, sorry, that's confusing.
That's all right.
They confused us as well because they, they use them all differently in different places, but.
Okay.
I think we should go with the LSC Communications.
Gotcha, and then I think I answered, I found my answer here, but we're 10 years at the normal fall off, yeah.
Traditional, yes, exactly, yep. Yeah, that's the maximum allowed.
So, you know, we, I've sat in here and listened to where some, some companies that we've given tax abatements to didn't really perform the way they said they were going to perform. If we give the, these, this 10-year tax abatement, is this renewable annually so that we can make a determination?
Yeah, just like the real property, every year, they'll be required to provide a form in, that you guys normally do in like April and May and you'll be able to review that they have made the commitment or are meeting the commitment that you've provided. So every year, you guys will still have the opportunity to review this and agree to continue to allow it to move forward.
Is this a legal written commitment?
It is, it's, it's called a certificate of substantial compliance and so the auditor won't allow them to continue to have the abatement unless they submit a state board of accounts form to you, which shows that they are substantially complying with their commitments, then you must, in a public meeting, vote on that and then you have to submit that back to the state and the local auditor or they don't get their, or they don't receive their abatement, they, they lose that. So it will involve an annual review, they will have to refresh their information every year and so yes, that's how it works. And if you in your town have 45 abatements, you do 45 of them every spring, that's how it works. You have only had three or four in Avon, but you're, you're going to get more now with Avon Landing and some others, so you're going to start seeing more of those. Those are generally due and submitted to the town by the end of April and then you take action, usually Mayor June, as Ryan said, they can be submitted late and you can still grant them, but you'll get information regarding payroll actually paid, number of employees, what the average wage is, what their personal property investment is, and then for real estate, you'll, you'll, you'll know exactly how much they spent on their real estate improvements. So you maintain an oversight role.
What's the legal definition of substantial?
Well, that, they leave that up to you, actually, it's not defined. Substantial completion means.
Clarify that.
They don't have to, if they estimate that they're going to have 200 jobs within three years and they, and it's going to have $20 million revenues, payroll, I mean, and they roll in and they have 183, then you guys can decide whether 183 is substantially compliant with an estimate of 200 or not. And my experience is been, I mean, I have had clients who have, who have voted, no, it's not substantial compliance and some who have generally, oh, there's progress made or the lack of progress that's close enough can be explained and you've had, you've had one of those where it was easily explained, but the economic impacts were actually larger, even though they didn't technically comply.
So will we have, Ryan, will you have or will we, as the council, have a number that we can go by on an annual basis as to whether or not we think they're substantially in compliance till they meet the amount that you've stated? So is it going to take them 10 years to do that or is it three or four or five? So you understand?
I'm not, no, I'm not sure I understood your, ask me again.
How many jobs did they say they were going to provide?
Oh, right. Yeah, they have to put on the form how many they said they would provide and then they'll show you how many they've filled at that point.
But if they have a phasing, that's part of the application where they say, we're going to start with 50, yeah, you can always look back and say, what exactly did they tell us? And generally, your economic development director will have that information for you and so that SB1, which you see attached to that, contains that information about number of additionals, number retained, you can see there in section three. So even though they think they'll have, say, 200, what they're telling you here is they're going to retain 20 and add 40, that's what they're really kind of saying they're going to do and then if they go beyond that, which they clearly expect that they'll add 160 more jobs, then that's just gravy, but they're representing to you at least 40 with 20 retained, $2 million, over $2 million additional payroll. So right there in the middle of that SB1 is what, is what you can rely upon.
So that's, that's where I was getting at and I just wanted everybody to understand it's not 200 jobs.
Right, yeah, and this will be my reminder, so I know if I say it now, you'll remember next year, but I'd like to see the SB1s at that meeting.
Good idea, yeah. When they file it, yeah, they will, there'll be a place on their application for your certification where it says, we told you 40 jobs to 2,905,000 and I do, I'm like Jason, though, I like to see the SB1 because I want to see, I want to make sure that's accurate.
Yeah, when, in the auditor's office, we would compare the two. They should be the same.
I mean, 200 sounds nice. I mean, 200 sounds nice. I don't want the folks at home or in here to believe that we're doing this and they have to provide 200. They don't.
Right. And then you'll see too, right below that on the SB1, it says logistical distribution equipment. What is their value of new equipment? $6,295,000. So there you've got that number also. So they'll make representations to you on both of these, the number of employees, the payroll and that logistical distribution equipment installed and put into service. So you'll have all that. And then, and I've heard Jason talk about it, but remember too, I will always, I recommend you ask about the retention also. That's not nothing. And so if they say they're going to retain those jobs and the payroll's going to be 1172, I think it's worth saying, well, tell me how many jobs you actually retained, tell me how many you added. And if there's variations, good or bad, plus or minus, explain that and that's always good information to have. It tells you a little bit about, it tells you a lot about what's going on.
Okay, if there aren't any more questions, then we'll go ahead and open up the public No one in the room coming forward. We'll go ahead and close our public hearing. And now we will entertain a motion.
Are we actually voting on this? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-27 granting the tax abatement to LSC Communications Book LLC as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Julie Roelkamp, please.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Next, we have resolution 2025-29 declaring police vehicles as surplus property. See Deputy Chief Margeson coming forward.
Good evening, David Margeson, Deputy Chief of Enforcement. I think Lieutenant Barton and Clerk Treasurer Locar already kind of helped me out with this, but the specifics of it are we have a vehicle that is what I would call end of life. It's a 2012 Chevrolet Tahoe, has over 150,000 miles on it. This was assigned to an officer who's currently driving an unmarked vehicle. She had taken it in for repairs and I received a phone call from the repair shop that said it needed approximately $3,000 worth of work. And I told them to not do that and we would pick it up and take it out of service until I had a chance to speak with you guys. I don't believe it's fiscally responsible to spend that money on it. And I would like to be able to take it to auction and use that money that we received towards the outfitting of some of the new vehicles that Lieutenant Barton spoke about. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. There'll be several more of these to come as we replace some of the vehicles with the 25 Tahos that we're finally getting out to the road now, so.
I think I asked Chief Stoops this at one point. I don't remember the answer. Do we have a company that we use to auction these off?
We have had success throughout the years with Odessa down in Plainfield. They have a number, dealer number for us, I think is what they call it. We drive it down there, give them the thing, then they take it through the auction and call us and say, hey, it's sold. Or if we can put a reserve on it and they'll call us and say, hey, it didn't meet the reserve, do you want to sell it for this amount? And we'll say, no, we'll just wait until maybe the market's better. But we haven't ever experienced that. It generally sells for more than what we think it will, so.
What, do you know what their fee is?
I think it's a, it's a very small amount. I don't know that's even a percentage. I think it's only a few hundred dollars to do our cars. I can find out for sure, but.
I think it's either 250 or 350 a vehicle. It's very cheap, actually. And it is a flat cost.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, putting more money into the vehicle that's almost obsolete doesn't make a lot of sense, so. We appreciate you giving that consideration, so. Any questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2025-29 declaring the police vehicles as surplus property.
Second.
Thank you, Julie Roelkamp, please.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Thank you.
Counsel report. Thank you, Dave.
Nothing, thank you.
Second of two public comments periods. No one coming forward. We'll move on to counsel comment. Ryan, counsel calendar.
Yeah, a couple of things. It is October 31st, we do have trick or treating here at the town hall for Halloween, 10 to noon. If any of you guys want to join us, we'd be happy. Suzanne and I have a table or any, if you want to join any of the rest of our tables and hand out candy to kids, we'd love to have you. Anyone out in the public, if you're listening, we'd hope you can join us. We also have giving back, which is again, a great team building thing for my staff, but it's also a great opportunity for the community to give back. We donate all of our food to the Mary Lee Mayor Food Pantry. We'll be collecting food on November 19th from 7:30 AM till 3:30 PM. And then we, the staff takes all the food over there and stocks all the shelves. Again, a great opportunity to give back to the community, especially around Thanksgiving time, when some people don't have the luxuries that some of the rest of us do. And the final thing, reminder, you do have a next town council meeting is November 6th at 7:00 PM. We do have a work session as well at 5:30 PM. Oh yeah, thank you. This is a reminder too, that this meeting is the last meeting, the second and the fourth in November. In December, we swap and we go to the first and third Thursdays of the month. So that's good for the public to know too, if you want to come out and join us for our meetings, first and third. Because of the holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas, we meet the first and third Thursday.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.